Great, so welcome. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our community open house for the Northeast 85th Street Station Area Plan. Really appreciate everyone joining us this evening for our Q and A session. We're going to get going in just a moment here and wanted to, as we begin, do an acknowledgement. And certainly this evening, I would like to acknowledge that the Southern Salish region lies on the unceded and ancestral land of the Coast Salish peoples, including the Duamish, Mukulchut, Pualup, Skikomish, Snohomish, Sequamish, and Tulayup tribes, and other tribes of the Puget Sound Salish people. And of course, the present day city of Kirkland is in the traditional heartland of the Lake People and River People. And we want to honor with gratitude the land itself, the first people who have reserved treaty rights and continue to live here since time immemorial, and their ancestral heritage. And I'd also just like to take a moment to acknowledge as well the lives that have been lost from recent violence and hate crimes, as well as from COVID. Tonight's agenda for this evening's meeting, we'll just do a quick introduction, and we are going to give you upfront some key information around the purpose of this Station Area Plan and what is next in the process and how you can participate. And then we will have three segments. Each will be an overview of some of the materials that will be available, and will be followed by a public Q and A session for three segments. The first on the Station Area Plan and Comprehensive Plan, the second on the Form-Based Code, and the third on the Preliminary Planned Action Ordinance. So that is our agenda for the evening. And I'll turn it over to the city and to Allison to give us a welcome.
Thank you, Erin. For those of you who I haven't met, my name is the city's Planning Department, and I've been the project manager for the Station Area Plan for the last couple of years here. And I want to thank everyone here tonight. Thank you so much for spending a sizable portion of your evening with us. And I know many of you have been following the project for quite some time now. So those of you who this is your third or fourth community workshop, welcome. For those of you who this is your first workshop, welcome. Also wanted to welcome and acknowledge, we do have several city council members and planning commissioners here in the audience. They are here to listen and learn. They won't be speaking, but they are here to join you in learning more about the Station Area Plan. Wanted to quickly that we have several folks here tonight to help answer the questions that come up. That includes several folks from the city, including myself, Deputy C. D. Planning Director Adam Weinstein, Jeremy McMahon, who is our Deputy Planning Director, Victoria Kovacs from the Transportation Team. We have Shaylin Reed running the Zoom Room in the background, and also some of our video staff is here recording the session, which is also being livestreamed right now out to the city. And lastly, thank you to them. I believe they'll be introducing themselves as they, as they present being here. And then also in a moment here, I'll be turning it over to our permission Angela Rosman to talk a little bit more about the legislative process. And that's really the goal and the intention of gathering tonight is to help the community understand that legislative process better and help the community prepare to participate with us in that legislative process to adoption of Station Area Plan. And so we have several draft documents available on the Station Area page now. We'll be pointing those out at several points throughout the evening. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to our Planning Commission Chair Angela Rosman to talk a little more about some suggestions for what Planning Commission would be looking for, would appreciate as the community makes public comments at that hearing scheduled for June 9.
Hi all, Angela here. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who is here tonight. The Station Area Plan is probably one of the biggest things we will do as a city during our, I'd say, lifetimes, or at least our time here at the city. And so having your comments heard and being part of this process is really, really important because clearly, if you're here, I think you might agree that it is very important to what our city looks like in the future. And with that, I just want to say, let's try and make sure as much as possible to make comments based on what the Planning Commission has purview on. So specifically, let's focus on the Station Area and the zoning, et cetera. And, you know, if there are other concerns you have about other topics, you know, absolutely reach out to the city, but let's try and be real focused on the Station Area here so that we can all give our, like, time and energy to make it the best possible Station Area that we can. So the public hearing is on June 9, and we want to hear everyone's opinions on this, and that will be the very best time to do that. Also, if you want to give longer comment via email, our inboxes are always open. And then after all of the public comment is done, then the Planning Commission will do our deliberation. That may be continued to June 14, just based on how many people give comments that day. So once the public comment is closed, that will be the end of the, you know, public input in the process, and then the commission talks after that. So and then, once we come as a commission and have a recommendation, then that goes to City Council. And City Council makes the final decision based on our recommendations. And I think that's about it. Just thanks again for being here and giving your time on an actually sunny afternoon to important stuff to make our city the best, which is, I think, why we're all here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Rosman. Really appreciate it. I should introduce myself. Good evening, everyone. I'm Erin Ishizaki, and I'm a partner with Methune, where the consultant team that's helping to support the city and the broader community in developing this community vision and proactive plan for the Northeast 85th Station Area. I also just want to make a quick note that we are recording this session so that folks are aware. All right. So as a quick introduction, we wanted just to remind everyone, why are we planning for this area? And it was really prompted by the new Washita and Sound Transit Bus Rapid Transit Project, including the new Bus Rapid Transit Stride Station, along with the new interchange improvements at I-405 and Northeast 85th. And it's really exciting. This is a once-in-a-generation investment that will connect Kirkland regionally to other destinations and light rail with really frequent service. So in 2019, the City Council directed this planning effort to help leverage that investment and proactively plan for potential growth. This is a 20-year plan, and we are planning for the horizon of 2044. And so the city's objective with this planning effort is to think about the Station Area today, and again, looking forward to 2044. The goal and objective is to maximize transit-oriented development and create the most opportunity and inclusion, the most value for the city, the most community benefits and quality of life while planning for this growth. And so we wanted to just make sure that folks are aware what is changing and what does the plan entail. So you can see on the right here, a map showing about several different boundaries. What is happening includes a Station Area Plan document, which comprises and is an overlay over six different neighborhoods. The black solid boundary is the outer boundary of that plan. We are also talking about some new zoning codes and regulation updates. And so the Form-Based Code boundary is the inner black dashed line. And then finally, this in the commission and council will be considering some additional changes to what we are calling the Phase One Boundary, which is highlighted in the yellow in the center there and a small portion on the west side of 405. And you can see it will be the Station Area Plan, Comprehensive Plan Updates, some Regulation Updates, and then a Planned Action Ordinance will also be created, which will be Environmental Review for actions that are a part of this plan within the Station Area. So just to touch a little bit on what the planning process has been, since 2019, when council directed this planning effort, the first phase was scoping and developing several different draft alternatives that were studied as part of a draft supplemental EIS, and that occurred throughout 2020 and 2021. As a part of that, there was further study done on some of the fiscal impacts and community benefits of those different alternatives. And in December of 2021, the council adopted a preferred plan direction, and the final supplemental EIS was published this year. And in this summer, we are working, as I just said, on the final plan zoning amendments and planned action ordinance. And so we really want to thank everyone for all of your efforts and helping us make this a community-driven plan. It does build on and uses as a foundation the 2035 Comprehensive Plan for the city, as well as all of our six neighborhood plan goals. We also have used the Sustainability Master Plan, the Cross Kirkland Corridor Master Plan, and many others as a basis. And I really do just want to emphasize, of course, all of these came with their own community engagement process, and all do represent community goals. And so we really want to build upon those. And as I mentioned, this, this effort did look at several different alternatives last year, and you can see some of those here, again, trying to support growth over the next 23 years. So a big part of this has been, as Allison said, working with the community and the public to really help shape, shape the plan and help us set priorities together. We have heard from over 1,000 stakeholders of all ages and stages who live and work in the area. So you can see on the bottom, some of the different groups of focus and had a very specific engagement and outreach effort for many different groups who will be affected by this plan, and some of the different survey responses and types of engagement and meetings that we've had along the top. So throughout this community conversation around setting priorities, we've heard a lot of comments, which we so appreciate and have used to help shape the plan and also to, in order to move things forward with selecting a direction. And so you'll see on the next slide, these are some of the common questions and comments that we've received. And you can see housing, traffic, height, growth. These are some of the questions we've received. Some sample comments that we received are also along the side here, just to give folks an idea of some of the conversation to date. And so there's been a number of different ways we've incorporated in this input. Council has specifically held additional listening sessions, has instructed additional analysis that we mentioned before making decisions, and has also taken off the table alternatives that clearly there was not community support for. That was in the earlier alternative stage. And since then, we've heard some ongoing concerns. Some of those relate to traffic congestion and parking impacts and questions about the pickup drop-off for the Bus Rapid Transit Station that's planned. And so we've continued to refine some specific transportation projects and policies, and are continuing to coordinate with Washita and Sound Transit as well to provide more information to community members. And there'll actually be another meeting this evening to one of the neighborhood groups. So just to reemphasize, we're really encouraging everybody to continue with participating. And we encourage you to share your comments with decision makers with the Planning Commission. And so just want to highlight, as Commissioner Rosman shared, June 9 is the public hearing, which would be great to share your comments at, in addition to, you can see some of these dates for, they're looking for recommending to City Council an adoption of the Phase One materials later in June. So this evening, as we get going, we want to, again, get the information out there, help you navigate and understand where, where to comment and how to provide your feedback and input. As we get going, we want to remind folks that everyone is welcome. We're really looking to hear and share all viewpoints. A few rules, we want to make sure that one person speaks at a time, and that we hear from everyone at least once, that we're respecting the views of others. We're really trying to listen to understand and not debate. And we ask that people are ready to expand on your view or question so that it might be best understood. And of course, hate speech is not tolerated in this forum. For folks, within this webinar format, as I mentioned, it is being recorded, and we'll be posting these information pieces to the Station Area Plan webpage for people who would like to refer to that. During the Q and A, we asked that members of the public limit your questions or comments to two minutes, please. And we're, we're really trying to respond to as many questions as possible tonight. You may also use the question and answer function by typing into the box as well. And just a reminder, you can mute, unmute yourself using a button on the far left within Zoom. So again, how to ask a question, you can raise your hand, your virtual hand to get in line for speaking, or type a question into the Q and A box. All right. So this is going to begin the first presentation portion, which is on the Station Area Plan concepts and the Comprehensive Plan. And we'll have about a 15-minute presentation, and then Q and A for this segment. So the Station Area Plan sets out the vision and the goals for the Station Area that have been developed with the community. It's envisioned as a thriving new walkable district with high-tech and family wage jobs, with plentiful affordable housing, sustainable buildings, park amenities, and commercial and retail services, and all linked by transit. The plan does support adding up to just over 6,000 new households and 17,000 new jobs by the year 2044, in addition to all the residents and businesses here today. And of course, we know this won't happen all at once. It will be an incremental process. We really, the, the vision is a mixed-use vibrant environment where people can connect, and that's a model of innovation. That's both eco-friendly and also rooted in the history of this really pretty special crossroads within Kirkland. The Station Area Plan document, this is the contents of the document. And so there's some background material and existing executive summary at the beginning. And then, the Station Area Plan includes a set of community benefit strategies and a vision and urban design framework that, that shape the entire plan and are infused throughout. And then there are four specific chapters on recommendations, including land use and zoning, parks and open space, transportation and mobility, and utilities and public services. So we'll just walk you through some of the highlights of what's included. Community benefits has been a huge conversation since early last year, or even before that, and really trying to emphasize how we can maximize community benefit through the growth that is being planned for. So these are the different community benefit topics, including that have been prioritized with the community, and those include housing for all, housing choices, schools and supporting education, sustainability and resilience, along with easy mobility, walking and rolling and getting around, as well as parks and open space. Some highlights that you'll see in the plan around strategies include a set of housing strategies and potential opportunities. There's been, affordable housing has been prioritized, and really looking to maximize that throughout the district and potential new development, and looking for ways to also connect that with some of the great amenities that exist today and are envisioned for the future. You'll also see housing show up in the incentive zoning component of, of the Form-Based Code. On schools and education, we know that there's a really strong desire to support our school district, as well as education opportunities for all ages in this area. And so there's been lots of work done, and you can find strategies about models of different more urban-style schools that fit within this new development vision, including examples like childcare within the ground floor of buildings, as well as mixed-use school facilities. And we've also been looking at how we can support the school within the district, as well as just outside of the Station Area. And then sustainability is another important topic that you'll find a strategy on within the plan. The, this area is a really great opportunity to realize some of the citywide sustainability master plan goals. And so we've looked at a set of different opportunities, especially around green infrastructure and habitat, as well as around energy and decarbonization that you can find within the plan. And so the next section of the, of the plan is the vision and urban design framework. So we'll walk through a bit of that. Overall, again, for this long-range plan, we've included these common framework ideas in order to have a cohesive approach. The first is really emphasizing inclusive transit-oriented growth, and looking at incorporating more choices for both housing and jobs that are oriented towards the new transit that's coming. There's a set of pieces around looking at neighborhood transitions and also appropriate building scale. And really, all of this centered around great public realm experiences. And we know on the west side of 405, 85th, Northeast 85th Street is great separated. So we're looking at creating great public realms, both north and south of that, and connecting along the CKC. And on the, the east side of 405, really envisioning Northeast 85th, and all of those streets as, as really wonderful places to be connected, of course, by a network of active transportation options, and trying to bridge some of the barriers that exist today. And then, of course, looking district-wide at sustainability, and how we can enhance some of the amazing natural assets that exist within the Station Area. This image that you've seen is a, is a image of what Northeast 85th Street may look like in the future. This is looking, a view looking west. So you can start to see the sense of that public realm that we talked about, as well as what future development and streetscape improvements might look like, and how they come together. And on the right is an overview highlighting a few different ideas, opportunities, and projects that are envisioned throughout the Station Area. In addition to those overarching urban design framework ideas, we also, again, recognize that there's many unique places and spots within the Station Area and, and distinct neighborhoods. And so we're really aiming to emphasize walkable districts for people to live, work, learn, and play, and that they all have their unique attributes, from the more maker district in the Norkirk area to on the east side of 405, really emphasizing Forbes Lake as a, as a exciting and important asset, and looking at, thinking about that area as a gateway to Kirkland, as well as to Rose Hill. So the, the following chapters are some of the different community benefits topics, as well as where you'll find the recommendations in the plan. And again, there's four different, four of those. The first is land use and, and zoning. The next is parks, open space, and environment. And so this gives you a view of the overall framework. Within the plan, there's a set of different types of parks that are described, everything from smaller pocket parks, or linear parks, or community gardens, all the way up to larger-scale neighborhood and community-scale parks. We really, you'll find information about a vision for how we can improve those, and also improve connections to a lot of the existing community parks and assets that are nearby today. You'll see information about a vision for improving access to Forbes Lake, creating boardwalks, and better access for people to enjoy that asset, as well as beginning to connect it with the North Rose Hill Woodlands Park. So really exciting opportunity there. And then also, an idea that expands upon the CKC Master Plan, what, at 7th and 112th, where we have the intersection between the CKC and the, the path coming down from the BRT pickup drop-off. So that's a really great opportunity that kind of combines open space and recreation. In the Transportation and Mobility section, again, you'll see the overarching framework. Within here, there's a number of different pieces, and we're really emphasizing mobility for all ages and abilities, easy ways for people to walk, bike, and get around, get, take transit to some of the key services and destinations, along with managing congestion of streets from vehicles, as, as another component to the effort. So you'll see here, this is our coordination with the Active Transportation Plan with the city, and we're aiming to create a safe network, a connected bike network, and really encourage and incentivize more people to walk and bike throughout the area. There are, also are a set of transportation projects that have been studied, that are envisioned to support that all ages mobility, as well as to manage some of the congestion that may be coming with growth. And so you'll see here, a sampling, an example of some of those. And, and there's a full list and more information within the plan on these. And the last section of the plan is utilities and public services. As part of the planning for growth, again, over this 20-plus-year horizon, part of what was studied is what type of infrastructure and utilities are needed to support that growth. So that's also found within the plan, and that was actually studied as part of the fiscal impact study to understand how that, what that might cost, how it can be paid for, and of course, how it will happen incrementally over time, so that we're able to support that future growth. So that is the last section of the plan. On the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, so this is a piece that will be complimentary to the plan document that we just looked at. There will be a new Station Area Chapter added to the Comprehensive Plan, and it will include goals and policies for that future growth. It'll be an overlay to the existing neighborhood plans, and it will only include some minor edits to clarify any inconsistencies. So the goal is to adopt this by ordinance in June. This gives an overview of the different goals that you'll find within that Comprehensive Plan update. And so you can see the different elements that are included within that Comprehensive Plan, and that will be addressed to give you an idea of that range. And then finally, there's also a set of policies that will be within that Comprehensive Plan as well. And you can find that on the Station Area Plan webpage, within the draft documents that are all posted and available for folks to get access to. So with that, we'd love to take questions and answer them, and Sandra will be facilitating that.
Yeah, thank you, Erin. So we have about 25 minutes allocated for this section for the first portion of the Q and A. So please try to limit your comments to two minutes. And as was mentioned earlier, if you want to ask a question, please do so with the raised hand function, or alternatively, you can type your question into the Q and A box. So I see that, Ken, you had a question, so, or please unmute yourself, and then go ahead and ask your question.
I'm so sorry, Sandra. Bill was actually first, and he's already in the room.
I thought so, and I saw his hand went down. Okay, Bill, go for it.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for being
All right, thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks, everybody. You may know me. I'm Bill Blanchard, Pin Hill resident and also chairman of CAN, the Kirkland Alliance of Neighborhoods. And thank you for the wonderful presentation tonight. Erin, you did a great job in providing the vision and you know, what, what this investment's going to do. We are completely in favor of, you know, the state spending the money to, to build the interchange. I think the questions I have today are about the neighborhoods around it and that's, you know, kind of my, my job here. And when you talk about this vision, it, it seems very easy that all these things are going to come true. The parks, traffic, that kind of thing. But our group narrows down on what's happening. And I just want to point out, for example, schools. You know, in your presentation, it's very, you know, looks really great, you know, daycare and all that. But when we talk, and we do, we talk to the people involved, you know, Lake Washington School District has no vision for urban schools. They have no desire to go down this route. And I just want to point out that I'm asking the council and the people involved in this to look at these things closely because they're going to need a lot of work. And I really don't have a question. I guess I just had a statement. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for that comment. I'm wondering if Erin, if you want to tackle a little bit on the overall vision? And if Tracy wanted to speak to any component on the schools.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and let either Tracy or Allison speak to schools first.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Dunlap, Deputy City Manager with the City of Kirkland. We've been working with the school district over the last, oh, many, many months to talk about not only the impacts of the stationary plan on, on school capacity, but things we could do to help the school consider the best way to meet those needs over the 20-year period. And I think a few things that I might highlight is that one of the things that the stationary plan does is provide more potential capacity at the Lake Washington High School site for them to build potentially a structure that's several stories, that might include structured parking. But beyond the stationary plan process, the Planning Commission, as part of their work plan, is going to be looking at all the Lake Washington School District sites in, in the city and identify where they might be able to gain more capacity on those sites through changes in regulation or changes in zoning. And there are areas where the school dri- district is quite interested in what they could do with properties they already own. But we are working with them closely and they have engaged in their planning process to start looking at urban school models. And so we've been trying to provide them with some support in those discussions and making sure that they're talking to the potential development in the area. But I appreciate the comment and it is, it is an issue that is on the minds of, of the council and the Planning Commission as well.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, we have Ken McKenzie. If you can unmute yourself and ask your question or share a comment.
Okay, finally, thank you. So two simple questions to start. How many people are in this meeting? And let's divide that into city and consultants in one category and then non-city and consultants in the other. And secondly, the city manager told us in, in CAN that there had been over one and a quarter million dollars spent on consulting for this plan. And that was some time ago. So since we have a partner of Methune here, who's, whom, in most partnerships would be getting monthly statements concerning what's going on inside their, their firm. And they're the lead consultant here. I'd like to know how much money has been spent total to date with Methune and its subcontractors on this planning. Thank you.
Ken, thanks for the question and to answer the first part. It looks like we're just under 100 people. And I believe there's about 15 of us that are part of the consulting team. In terms of the amount spent, I, I don't have that figure with me. And I'm not sure if a member of the, of either Erin or if Jeremy wants to speak to that.
Erin, Erin must know, she's a partner.
Hi, Ken. Thanks for your question. Yes, you are correct. That is approximately the amount of the consulting contract that we are managing for this work. We do have a number of some consultants that I didn't get a chance to mention that are helping with a lot of the technical analysis and some of the traffic studies and other studies that were requested by council last year. And well, I don't have like, you know, my monthly statement for May, but I will say that, you know, we are finishing our work in June. So we are mostly complete with, with our work to date.
I was just at, can I, sorry, Jeremy McMahon, the Deputy Director of Planning and Building. I think the, probably the budget allocation that Kurt provided can is pretty accurate of what we've budgeted for this project over the last couple of years. It's significant, but it also reflects the significance of this project to the city. As Sandra and Erin noted earlier, this is one of the largest, if not the largest, planning endeavor we've undertaken in Kirkland because it really is transformative of a district in Kirkland in a way that we haven't had an opportunity before with this kind of transit opportunity. So it is a range of, you know, as Erin's talked about, the different aspects of community benefits, the fiscal impacts that have been studied. It's a broad range of consultants across transportation, finance, planning, architecture. So it's been a pretty robust study. All those materials are available for, for public review. And I think Allison may pitch the webpage a little bit of where to find all that information. But we're pretty proud of the work we've done and think we're making a good use of public resources here.
Thank you, Erin and Jeremy. Next, we have Sharon Cox. If you could unmute yourself. I, I know there's a little bit of a lag. That's why there's a little bit of a pause.
Here. Hi, my name is Sharon Cox. I have, well, a couple of things just from what we've been talking about. My understanding is that we're supposed to have a 40% tree canopy in Kirkland because of all the climate change and sustainability issues. I don't see a 40% tree canopy anywhere here in the stationary plan. Two, there's no increased parks. All the parks that are listed in Kirkland are existing parks. I don't see anywhere where this, all this money that the state is spending, that all of these businesses are spending to build all these great buildings. I don't see where there or the city of Kirkland with all the additional tax revenue is building any additional parks in this whole area. So those are two of my concerns from what I've seen so far. But my biggest question is, right now, there is the intersection at Kirkland Way and 114th where it intersects with 85th Street is right next to 405, where people are getting on and off 405 at the 85th Street. This intersection serves at least four neighborhoods that are west of the 405, including Norkirk, including Highlands, including Moss Bay, including Everest. There are multiple residences in this area. There are multiple businesses, including two huge Google campuses, which I know are a big priority for the city. And my question is, is, is the traffic signal at Kirkland Way and 85th Street going to be removed? Yes or no? And if it's going to be removed, how are you going to manage the traffic at this intersection?
Really great questions. So we've got a, that's a three-part. So tree canopy. Jeremy, if you could cover tree canopy, parks, Erin or Tracy? And then the traffic signal, we'll kick that to Victoria third. So Jeremy, if you wanted to cover the tree canopy portion?
Sure, thanks, Sharon. Tree canopy is a citywide measurement and we do canopy studies periodically to look at where we stand in terms of our 40% goal that's established in the comprehensive plan. The expectation is that we don't meet our canopy, that canopy doesn't happen on every parcel in every district in Kirkland. So obviously, a lot of that 40% canopy is made up by city-owned parks and open space, right-of-way, things like that. Obviously, a lower-density area where you have say 50% lock coverage is apt to have a higher canopy percentage than a very dense area like downtown Kirkland, which might have 100% lock coverage. So it is variable over time. There are a lot of efforts here in the stationary plan in terms of our, our green factor and some of the things we'll talk about here in a bit to, to work on canopy restoration in this, in this area. But if you just took a parcel in the district, I don't think the goal would be typically to get 40% canopy in a fairly urban part of Kirkland. Nor would we likely have it right now with the parking lots in the area.
Okay, I just know that they're, they're already, when they, they rezoned all the tree ordinances because of letting Google build on the Lee Johnson Chev property. There's some absolutely huge gorgeous trees on the backside of Lee Johnson Chev that probably house a lot of animals, a lot of birds. Those are all going to be wiped out, which is going to be a big disappointment to me as an environmentalist. And I don't see where there's any replacement of those huge fir trees. I mean, putting in a few trees that lose their leaves in the wintertime isn't going to make up for the habitat loss and the loss environmentally for the, all those big trees that are on that property. That it's really a shame that that part of the property wasn't excluded from development because it's a rare to even still have those kind of trees in Kirkland, especially in the downtown core. So I find it really disappointing for me personally that you're going to allow Google to cut all those trees down. So maybe the council could take a look at that. Maybe Google could donate that part of their property to the city of Kirkland so that Kirkland could have another open space area which allows for habitat for wildlife. That would be a really nice thing, I think, for the council to ask Google to do. They're a multi-trillion-dollar corporation. I'm sure they can afford to donate a few acres of land to the city of Kirkland for this thing. So that's my suggestion to resolve that issue.
Thank you, Sharon. We just want to keep comments under two minutes. I don't know if Erin or Tracy wanted to talk more about parks, habitat and that component of the question.
Yeah, I just thought I'd, I'd maybe give some quick information on that. You're correct that some of the parks that we're identifying are parks that already exist or properties that the city already owns. Forbes Lake being one, the Cross Kirkland Corridor being the other. But I think what is being looked at for those locations is to really activate those sites to build out essentially a linear park on the Cross Kirkland Corridor similar to the level of build-out at, at Ferret and Spur, but also really activating Forbes Lake Park, which right now is not very widely used. But in addition to activating those properties that the city already owns, we are identifying potential properties to target for acquisition and setting some money aside for that. And we will be building in incentives into the zoning process where development will get additional density by making publicly accessible property, publicly accessible trails or, or plazas or basically open space elements that are accessible to the public but on, on the private property. And so as part of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, we are putting in urban service-level guidelines so that we can really look at ways to provide park access and, and park amenities in this more urban type of structure.
Thanks, Tracy. And then the third component to the question for Sharon was about, I want Victoria to comment on whether there will be a traffic signal removal at Kirkland and 114th.
Yes, good evening. I'm Victoria Kovacs. I'm a transportation planner in the Public Works Department at the City of Kirkland. Regarding Kirkland Way, 114th, 85th intersection that will be a roundabout as part of the Wash Dot Interchange Project. So the signal will be removed. However, there will be crosswalks still with rapid flashing beacons that can be activated for people crossing the lanes of the roundabout.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, next question is from Curtis. So Curtis, if you could unmute yourself and ask your question or share your comment.
Can you hear me?
Curtis, oh yeah, we can hear you.
All right, thanks. So Curtis Brown, for those basically speaking to community members that are here as the city members know exactly who I am. Now we are the, I just wanted to speak to everyone that's on this call that might be hearing this for the first time. And just to let you know, this was, this is a laughably rosy sales job in terms of the project. For those of you that, that don't know, this has, though they tried to present it as such, this has nothing, well, this has extremely little to do with affordable housing. So the feedback that they said to send, please do send that to the Planning Commission, the city council members, but you've got to send that to your neighbors, community members, the newspapers, social networks. Because as they said, that this was created from community feedback, that is a bold-faced lie. We've actually gone through the public comment and specifically shown them that the public is vehemently against these extreme heights. And yet it's being presented as though, and, and yet they continue to go back to what the plan is, which is a Google gift plan. So your, your feedback is not being taken into account. And even, even the Planning Commission, as a Google employee on it, who has refused to do the ethical thing and stepped down, recommended much lower heights. And yet the Kirk Triplets City Council basically still jamming through 250 feet buildings that, by the way, that glossed over here, that's going to be 325 feet above 85th Street. That is purely for a business, a multi-trillion-dollar business. And Kurt Triplett has expressly told us, he's not about housing. He specifically wants businesses here because he gets greater tax revenue. So guys, you've got to get involved. This is, they just said 20,000 new houses, 6,000 new households. That's roughly 50,000 additional trips just in those couple, on, on 85th. You will not be able to use 85th. Your quality of life here will be down. And that's, and that's, that's aside from the fact that they're coming after people like us to force us out of our homes. The women's shelter, a church. Look at the plan. It is not for anyone but Google and a couple of businesses. That's all. Please tell your neighbors, get people involved.
Thanks. Thank you, Curtis, for that comment. I just wanted to say there was a lot in there. And I think that there is, there is a lot of focus on affordable housing. And I'll leave it at that. But I will, let's call on Liz Hunt for your next question or comment. And if you could please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hi. All right, that's a tough act to follow. Lots of interesting, relevant thoughts in there from Curtis. My question in comment takes a slightly different tack. I'm looking for some guidance on reviewing and, and the stationary plan document, the vision document, the new chapter of the comprehensive plan, whatever we're calling it. I see it on the website and it looks like it's 327 pages. And this is one of the documents that are going to be reviewed at the June 9th public hearing, as I understand it. So I'm looking for guidance as to how people can approach this document, especially people who haven't been involved in tracking this project. So three hundred and twenty seven pages, what do you recommend for people to tackle that, figure it out, figure out how to submit comments? And then there's additional documents as well. I haven't looked at the page count on those. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Really great question. I think everybody has the same question. I'll I'll let Allison speak more to this, but the city's website is going to be the hub for all of this information. But Allison, do you want to add more on where folks can find all of these great documents and how to kind of read through these things in an efficient way?
Yes, and thanks so much for the question, Liz. I'm hoping my audio issues have resolved themselves, but someone else feel free to interrupt me if I'm choppy. So I think that we can, and we'll talk a little bit, we can talk more about this, but I think that the way we want folks to understand kind of the order of hierarchy and how the documents relate with each other is that the stationary plan is the longest, largest document. It is very graphic heavy and so the it's not three hundred pages of text, though I do know it's quite a long document. And it's really the strategy and the vision and sums up the planning process that we've been embarking on since twenty nineteen. And so if you're looking for things to make specific comments on, I would recommend really diving into the comprehensive plan goals and policies because that's the actual code and the comprehensive plan that then tells us what to do in the implementation tools for the station area, which is the form based code and the design guidelines. And so I'd start with the 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 goals and policies and then look at those and how they show up in the implementation tool, specific comments on the form based code and design guidelines are great as well. I would say the stationary plan is the document if you want to get background and learn a little more about how we got to those specific goals, policies and the tools you see in the form code.
Thanks, Allison. So we do have just a couple of minutes left, so this will be the last question for this segment. So James, if you could unmute yourself and go ahead and ask your question or share a comment.
Hi, thanks for taking my question. I think Curtis touched upon this. In an earlier version version of the plan, I saw that the this question is about max building heights. I see that the max building height in most of this area is about a hundred fifty feet, but the Lee Johnson plot specifically, the max height is fifty, two hundred fifty feet. I'm wondering if, one, that's still the plan. And two, if we could explain a little bit about the rationale behind that, I mean, two hundred fifty feet is an extra forty percent over anything around it. And it's hard to see how that benefits the the community to have kind of this this area, this very small area of very tall buildings.
Thanks, James, for that question. In terms of the heights, that that is correct, but I wonder if Jeremy or Erin, if you wanted to speak more about the mixed use district and the vision for that particular area with the heights.
Thanks, Sandra. I can I can start on that and then the team can feel free to chime in. We started early in the process with kind of through the environmental review process with looking at the maximum envelope of heights that we might might want to study in the stationary plan. So we had three alternatives from no action up to like super high up to three hundred feet in some of these commercial areas close in. I think the desire there was to have the most intensive uses, the closest to the station itself. So you'd have them the most people who could take advantage of that new transportation choice. As the study has progressed, those heights have come down and changed, not necessarily by property ownership or or anything like that. It's more related to like a council and listening to community feedback felt like the high end, the high bookend that we studied in the environmental impact statement wasn't appropriate. So we scaled back based on that. And then as we continued our transportation study about looking for how the transportation network supports different levels of growth in the stationary plan. We found that that quadrant on the north side of eighty fifth, like where Costco is, it was it was harder to to move and and adjust the transportation improvements that that could accommodate that level of intensity in that quadrant. So that's how that came down to a hundred and fifty feet. Whereas the southeast quadrant, which is where the Lee Johnson site is, we found that we could adjust the transportation improvements accordingly. So still go with the higher densities and intensities in that area close to the station itself. So, yeah, Erin or Allison, feel free to chime in on that or supplement.
All right. With that, that brings us to the end of this portion of the Q and A. So this takes us to the second part of the agenda where I will pass it off to Brad from Methune.
Great. Can you hear me okay, Sandra?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Barnett with Methune. And we're going to talk now about the form based code and the design guidelines, the tools that will help shape the character of some of the development we've been talking about. So I'm going to spend a few minutes mostly focused on an overview of how those pieces work. They're different than traditional zoning code tools. So we wanted to talk through the organization a little bit and then give some examples of some of the pieces of the code and how it will shape development. So the form based code is really focused, as the name implies, on how the form of development is built out over time. So there's a few different pieces to this form based code as we regulate the physical form of the buildings and the streetscape and the frontages of the ground floor. So the regulating district is most similar to a traditional zoning district. So this will regulate, these are the colors that you'll see on a map, and this will regulate the building height. It'll shape the building massing, the shape of the building. It'll also address what we call facade modulation. So how the the exterior walls of the building look and are shaped. And then it'll also affect some of the lot standards like side and rear setbacks. So that's the regulating district. We'll talk more about that in a minute. The base of the building on the private frontage on the private lot are regulated by what we call frontage types. And so these provide design standards that shape the ground floor. It's roughly the first thirty feet of a building. And this is really important to the pedestrian experience, to the public realm experience of how people on the street from adjacent properties will interact with with the building. And so this regulates things like the front setbacks. So how the building is set back from the sidewalk, the ground floor design, so window treatments, doors, entries, awnings, cafes, or other kinds of things that are happening on the ground floor. Those are all regulated through the frontage types. And then the last category are street types. And this is new for a lot of zoning codes to include street types. These street types are mapped as well to each of the street segments within the form based code area. And each street type specifies a prototypical section of how the street should be designed and what it should look like and how it should accommodate pedestrians and cyclists and transit and cars, how all those pieces fit together. And the street types also impact the frontages so that the public realm experience can be as seamless as possible, let us to say. So if the buildings look like they belong on the kind of street that we're designing. And then the last piece, which is kind of an overlay to all of those are design guidelines. And so these are advisory guidelines that help the design review process, the design review board address things like overall site planning, so where driveways are, things like that. Facade designs are more details about material choice, window placement, a lot of the really specific design decisions that get made for a building, materials, and then other environmental things like lighting and signs and those sorts of details. So taken together, this package of different parts comes together to help shape how the buildings are going to contribute to character in Kirkland. Next slide. Okay, so this is just an example of how those different pieces work together. I kind of described those different parts, but this is kind of how those come together to shape a specific building and how it looks. You can see in white are some of the tools that we'll get from the regulating districts, things like how corners are designed at intersections, that how wide or how long a facade of a building can be, whether we require upper story setbacks as we get to taller floors of a building. The frontage types, as I mentioned, regulate that base of the building. So you can see here that the ground floors and the window treatments and the entries and those pieces being regulated as well as front setbacks and porches and stoops in more residential areas. Districtwide standards apply throughout the district, so they're not specific to a sub area. They apply throughout. So rules about how transitions to existing neighborhoods is an example of a transit of a district wide standard. And then design guidelines, which affect the the details of building design. So the materials, the articulation, in this case, the balance of brick and glass would be something that would be covered through the design guidelines. And then lastly, the green factor is something I'll talk about in a moment. This is another chapter that focuses on how to make sure that sustainability and ecology and natural systems are incorporated into development. And I'll talk about that more in a minute, but things like making sure that there is new tree canopy and tree canopy preservation, stormwater function, permeable soils, those sorts of things are all covered in that green factor. So it's a lot of different tools, but it's necessary to have these tools to help ensure that we get the the character in the buildings that we want to see in the future. So if you go to the next slide, so this is an example of, I mentioned colors on a map. The tool that we use for these regulating districts is called a regulating plan. This includes a couple of different elements. There's a maximum allowed height, which is a number. If you look on the bottom left, you can see we're sort of breaking down how to read this. So on the, there's a number which is the maximum allowed height. The numbers that we're using in this map reflect the maximum envelope. If you were to utilize all of the incentive zoning that Tracy mentioned, we're developing. There would be an additional number that we're developing that would be the maximum allowed by right without providing any additional community benefits. And that's being developed currently. So that's why it's not on this map right now. The other pieces to this are a label that tells you where in the document to look for the design standards for that district. As Erin mentioned, I think at the very beginning, we're only focused in this first phase on the form based code for that area in red, the commercial mixed use zone. And so that label tells you where to look for those design standards. And then we've also got a few other pieces just to help orient people in this plan. So the white dashed line are places where specific rules about how to transition to adjacent parcels are required. And I'll I'll talk a little bit more about how those work in a minute. Next slide. So I'm going to step through some excerpts from the document itself that we're building, just to give you a really concrete sense of how this all comes together. So the first section, as I mentioned, these are the regulating districts, those colors on the map. They specify the basic parameters for how the lot can be developed. So they they include things like the permitted uses. They include things like lot coverage, so how much buildable area you can have on the lot. And then they also include other things that we commonly see in a zoning code, like the required yards or, in this case, the setbacks for the side and the rear. I mentioned frontage types, the fronts, front setbacks are regulated in those frontage types, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. And then the other piece, this is really the more form based piece of this section, is where we start to shape and sculpt the building massing itself. So this includes things like maximum allowed development heights. As I mentioned, there will be two height, two heights attached to each parcel. There will be the base maximum allowed height. That would be the amount you could build by right. And then there will be a bonus maximum allowed height, which could be tapped into if you provide the incentive zoning requirements for community benefits. And we'll talk more about that in a bit. There's also some, oh, if you go back, Sandra, sorry, a little bit more, there's also some other tools that we're going to use to regulate the buildings themselves and how the the shape of them and the form. There's maximum floor plates. That's just the size of the floor area of a given building floor. And those get smaller as you get, as the building goes taller. So that prevents the building from just going straight up from the ground. It requires you to step the building back at specific increments to make sure that you're protecting views and light and air and all of those sorts of things. And then there's also some specific tools to deal with some of the issues that you get into when you start looking at taller buildings in particular. So there are specific triggers for pulling the building back from the street. So at seventy five feet, you would need to pull the building back fifteen feet. At a hundred and twenty five feet, you need to come back thirty feet. And those are requirements on any street facing facade in this area. And then finally, there's some additional tools for tower separation that basically means if the building's above a certain height, it can't be within sixty feet of another building above that height. In this case, the height trigger is seventy five feet. So two buildings that were above seventy five feet would have to be separated by at least sixty feet of space. And that ensures again that light and air and views and things like that are considered in the in the development process. And then there's just a few other tools here that I won't spend as much time on that regulate the width of the facade, so just how big the building wall can be and how much you have to adjust and and modulate that that is moving the wall back or forward or changing material in order to make sure that we're preventing a long uninterrupted building walls. So now, Sandra, you can go to the next slide. So I also mentioned that there's a set of district wide standards. This is one example of those which are neighborhood transitions. The goal of this section is really to focus on making sure that development steps down, the taller development steps down to the future height allowed in adjacent zones. And so the way that this would work, there's a calculation, a formula that would be calculated that would define when these are required. We've already done that calculation on the map that was on the previous slide, just to help people understand where these would apply. But when they're required, they would require the the new development to set back fifteen feet with a landscape buffer from the adjacent parcel. Then they would only be able to go build up to the adjacent parcels zone. So for example, if someone wanted to build on a site and next door to that site, the maximum height was thirty feet, then after a fifteen foot buffer, they could only go up thirty feet. And then at that point, there's an angle that gets calculated and they have to stay within, under that angle. So that red box that you see is the angle that gets created, what we call a zoning envelope. And the development would have to stay within that zoning envelope. So they could do that by terracing the building, which is the example we show here. They could pull the whole building back and only go up at a certain point within that red envelope. But it essentially ensures that there's an envelope that you can't pierce as the new building to make sure that you're transitioning down to the adjacent development. Next slide. So I mentioned frontage types. This section is really focused on the ground floor, the pedestrian experience, the public realm. And there are five different frontage types that any given building can choose from as they're designing the building. These are some just examples of the character that's intended for each of those. And then if you go to the next slide, I'll step through one of these with a little bit more of an example. So each of the frontage types has the same kinds of information. It has a little bit of text describing the intent, some examples in terms of photos, precedence, and then really gets into the regulations themselves. So for each of these furnished types, we're regulating things about the ground floor design. So how tall the ground floor has to be, that affects the usability of the space for retail or other uses in the future, also affects daylight and creates good ground floor experiences for users. The facade transparency makes sure that we don't have blank walls on our ground floors that you can see into retail spaces and other public spaces. And then there's some other elements like max facade widths that make sure that we have a cadence of storefronts and shop fronts and other building fronts that is human scale, that creates interest and and is a pleasant environment for pedestrians. Then some of the other tools that we're using in this section reflect to the public realm. So they involve things like sidewalk and cafe zones and how those should be incorporated, front setbacks to make sure that the buildings are pulled up to the street and create a good pedestrian environment. And then also pushing back parking in these buildings so that the fronts of the buildings on the ground floor don't have parking stalls facing out. So all of these tools work together to help create that ground floor experience that we're articulating in the vision. If you go to the next slide. And then another piece are the draft design guidelines, which I mentioned earlier. These are going to more detail about the design features of the of the development. So they include two levels of detail at the site planning level. They would include additional requirements for streetscape, so tree selection, things like that. Public spaces, so how plazas and courtyards should be designed. Pedestrian connections and how wayfinding should help guide pedestrians through especially larger sites, which we have some of in the station area. Lighting, trash and service area screening, signs, landscaping, all the sort of bits and pieces that go into shaping and development at the architectural design level. And then there's some building level guidelines as well, which talk about how the building should meet the street, more details about massing and articulation and how to break up the massing to create human-scale buildings, parking garages, and some other features that are all really oriented towards creating guidance for the design review process. These also vary by sub-district. So if you're in the Forbes Lake District north of 85th, you would have a different set of guidelines that focus on ecology and Forbes Lake and Forbes Creek. And then if you're in another area, you might have different standards that focus on the gateway experience or public art or other pieces. Next slide. And then, as I mentioned, there's some other pieces that relate to ecology. This is a section called Green Innovation, and then the Incentive Zoning Program itself. So if you go to the next slide, I'll just jump ahead for time. One of the tools that will be in the code is something called a green factor. This would require all development to meet a certain set of standards for incorporating green infrastructure, stormwater, tree canopy and ecology into the site design itself. If you go to the next slide, the way that this works is there's a checklist and you get points based on preserving trees, introducing new trees, green roofs, landscape, a lot of the different pieces that go into sustainability at a site level. And there would be both a minimum requirement for all development as well as a score that would unlock incentive zoning opportunities to build taller, to do more on the site. And then last slide is the Incentive Zoning Program. And so I won't go into the details of this right now. It's still under development. But this would basically allow the applicant to build taller or do more on the site in exchange for providing community benefit in the categories that have been identified to date in the process. And so those would include affordable housing benefits, mobility and transportation improvements, parks and open space improvements, and high-performance buildings and other sustainability features as well for the district. Next slide. And schools, education and childcare space, which of course we've heard is a really important piece of the puzzle here. And I think that's it. I'll turn it back over to Sandra.
Thank you, Brad. Okay, so now we've hit the second portion of our Q and A. So we are a little bit over, but I think we can allocate about 15 or 20 minutes for this section. So I see Carter's first. If you have any questions related to the content Brad just spoke about, please unmute yourself and go ahead and ask your question or comment.
I'm sorry, I finally got unmuted. But my my basic question, though, I think Brad didn't answer it, but in other words, we have the basic building heights. I had two comments about it. First off, the previous edition I saw was 25 degrees. And we go, why not 30 degrees? Because anybody who had trigonometry in high school can go, oh, that's one foot over and then two feet up. Real simple. But the second part is these incentives are and the at the April 26 meeting, the presenter on the incentives showed additional building floors. And would to get, could a developer get additional floors above this max height? And and without the step backs or above the step backs, you know, in other words, is that be true? Is the step backs and everything a true hard limit? Or would the incentives allow them to go beyond?
Tracy, do you want to tackle the second portion here?
I think, actually, I think it was the first portion that I thought I could.
Okay.
That the incentive program is to be able to build to the heights that are contemplated in the zoning, the in the commercial mixed-use, the 250 in the southeast and the 150 in the northeast. And so these would be part of what we the amenities that would come with granting that additional height. It's not height above those those height limits. I don't know that I'm the best person to answer the second part, but I see Allison is on screen.
Yeah, and I obviously see Brad motioning towards possibly an unmute button there. So yeah, the the max height depicted on that map are the the maximum heights, including any incentivized space. And I think we can dig into it if I didn't answer that question completely.
And for the question about the street setbacks and those pieces, those are those would not be things that get waived as part of the incentive program. Those would still apply, and in fact, those anticipate the incentives being used. So that's why they, for example, go above heights that might be allowed under the base scenario. So those are the only piece that would be negotiable or that would be granted would be under the current structure of the of the incentive program would be additional height, which of course translates to additional development area. And that's to the 25-degree versus 30-degree. That was based on a lot of testing of what balanced the different dynamics that are at play when you're looking at those transitions. So shadow impacts, solar access, views, you know, a lot of those other pieces. It certainly is less easy to calculate from a trigonomic perspective. You're right about that. But in a performance standpoint, it performed better than some of the other angles that we tested.
Thanks, Brad. Dan Norman, if you can unmute yourself and ask your question or comment.
Yeah, hi. My name is Dan Norman. I'm a resident of the Highlands. I had a question about the kiss and ride in the Highlands neighborhood, and I apologize for not asking it during the first session. I tried to ask it, but you guys ran out of time. I have concerns about traffic and parking in the Highlands if the kiss and ride is put in. I'm wondering why they're not considering other options. On the one hand, I have read that this kiss and ride is necessary because so many Kirkland residents are in favor of it, that there's great demand for it. And on the other hand, I read, I think the study in one of the plans said it was 40 people a day are expected to use it, 20 in the morning and 20 in the evening, and presumably a lot of those are going to be the same people. So I guess I have two questions. One is if studies are showing that, you know, roughly between 20 and 40 people out of 90,000 Kirkland residents a day are going to be using this lot, why is it necessary? How is it justified the expense? And number two, hypothetically, if it is used more than that, what plans are in place to mitigate any traffic or parking issues specifically with a four-way stop at North 87th and 114th entrance to the Highlands right off of 405, especially with the increased traffic with all the bus station going in and everything, there's going to be a lot more traffic going through that area. It's already potentially going to be an issue. So I've also heard that Kirkland is against doing any permitted parking. So again, the two questions is why is this necessary? And number two, what mitigation plans are going to be in place for Highland residents for any traffic and parking if more people than expected come into the neighborhood or parking on the streets and are causing traffic issues.
Thank you, Dan, for that question. It's a two-parter. Allison, do you want to go for it?
Yeah, please. And thanks for the question, Dan. So first, the location of the pickup drop-off lot is under the purview of of Washshot and Sound Transit as part of their project, and we're actually they are actually attending the Highlands Neighborhood Association meeting tonight to talk more about that pickup drop-off lot that we've heard so many from the Highlands Neighborhood about. That meeting, I believe, starts at seven, but we have a hard stop for this meeting at 7:30, which is when their presentation is scheduled to start over at Highlands so that folks can potentially catch both. And we've talked to, Washshot and Sound Transit have visited their neighborhood association meetings previously, but the location of that is set by their project. So what we've done with the station area plan is try to figure out how to make that location work best for Highlands. And so in the plan, you'll see that there's a couple of different transportation projects that are recommended to make the pickup drop-off lot entrance work best for the neighborhood and also look at in the bike and pedestrian connections to the pickup drop-off lot and also down 7th and 87th to the CKC. The drop-off lot and any changes to volume were included in our transportation analysis for the station area. So we've looked at that over the past couple of years, and we think we have a good plan to make. Lastly, we are looking at considering implementation measures in the station area plan that would allow us to consider the idea of zone parking in that neighborhood if the need arises. So we're keeping an open mind on that.
Thanks, Allison. Okay, so Martin, I see you're next. If you could unmute yourself and go ahead and ask a question or comment.
Did I unmute me?
We hear you. Yep. Oh, now you're muted. If you can unmute again.
There. Okay. Mine's more of a kind of a, you know, slight history lesson and then a couple of questions. So I'm going to be specifically on 122nd Street south of 85th Street, right behind the commercial buildings on the west side of the street. There are some commercial buildings directly crossed on the east side of the street, a little further up. However, so in about 86, this little area up to 124th Street was annexed in the city of Kirkland, and it was given a height of about 25 feet. And then after that, the rest of Rose Hill was annexed about 1988 and given a height of 30 feet. So that's a little oddity right in there, but over that, and then now it's been in the piece of property right in there that I described in there. There's about four lots or so in there. That was zoned to be an office building. And at the commencing of the Neighborhood Association, they changed that zoning to multifamily. So here it is, 36 years later, and there's been no growth there. And so the question in regards to that would be just up 122nd, only a few hundred feet further, there's always been a planning commissioner member living there. And the current one would be Planning Commissioner Rodney Rutherford, which never seems to allow this area to grow. But, you know, I that would be a little Christian. Why, when you get 150-feet building right next to a 25- or 30-foot building, that seems to stop right there. And then the next question would be in that modulation of 30 degrees. When when you look at those pieces, property around there, the properties, those four things right up in there, they're too close to have any, that that would have any impact on them whatsoever, zero. However, that degree thing would have a great visual impact for Rodney Rutherford again. That, you know, the planning commission member that just lives barely up the street. So but then when you start looking at the actual effect on that property there, the first lot in there, which is a narrow lot about 62 feet, if you if you zone that for 150 feet, when you start adding the 30 degrees, he's now impossible to be able to build any building on that without being together with the buildings further to the north. So I'm just wondering how that code can reconcile itself in that area.
Great question, Martin. Brad, do you want to talk a little bit more about the transitions and the regulating plan related to height and the thought process behind that? And then perhaps Jeremy, if you want to speak to any of the the history portion that Martin brought up. But Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I think it might be good to start with Jeremy, and then if it's helpful to to dig in on the technical bits about the the transition, I'm happy to speak to that as well. But Jeremy, maybe you could kick it off.
Yeah, golly, I know Martin and I have talked about the history of the zoning in that area, which actually as a really old planner here predates my time from what happened in 1988. So I can't shed much more light on the history of the zoning for the area, but I think it's appropriate to talk about some of the specific nuances of the code that Martin addresses for the transitions.
Okay, so for the transitions, the, I'm trying to think of the best way to start. So the way that the transition would work, as I mentioned, is that there would initially be a landscape buffer established. So from that white line that you see there, the common lot boundary between the 25, 30-foot zone and the newly 150-foot zone, there would be a a 15-foot buffer applied. And then from there, you'd be able to go up to, in this case, 25 to 30 feet, depending on what the adjacent common lot property was on that 150-foot site. And then from there, you would get that that angle that would start to go north in this case, so into the site, the 150-foot site. And so in some cases, you're right, that to make that a practical lot for building, you might need to consolidate or assemble parcels to make that work. That's common in a lot of different cases with zoning codes that sometimes to make a building possible, you have to assemble parcels for the floor plates to work and things like that. So that would be the basic tool. The other thing that I would note in this area in particular is that the topography is really important to understanding the overall height that you can build at. And so the the heights here require a average building elevation calculation to be done. And so if you're downhill, if you're building downhill of a lower height, that's going to affect what you can actually build to. It takes into account those topographies. And so the net impact to a 25, 30-foot zone would be that the 150-foot building in this case, which is downhill, the perceived height would be less because of that. We also took into account some of the natural features that are in some of those areas. There's some really great old Doug fir trees and other evergreen trees that provide a visual screen and privacy. And so we took some of that into account as well when we were thinking about site-specific decisions about what zoning height and transitions might make sense for different areas.
So thank you, Brad. All right, I think this is going to be the last question for this segment. So Colleen, can you please unmute yourself and go ahead and ask your question? Colleen? Is it working?
Can you hear my audio now?
We can hear you now, yes.
Excellent. All right. A little learning curve on that. Thank you very much. Well, the first question is one that I've asked in multiple scenarios, in multiple environments, but I just wanted to visit it again in this forum. And then I have a second question. The first question is, given that they've now passed the high-performance building code, I have a question for confirmation on whether or not the all-electric aspect of that code pertains as a baseline requirement? Or is it an incentive? And does it apply to all districts? Did you want me to give you the second question, or do you want to address that one first?
I think we can address, yeah, the first. Yeah, Aaron, do you want to chime in on this, since you were leading the sustainability stuff?
Sure, yeah. So the the Green Innovation Code does incorporate all of the high-performance building ordinance measures as a baseline requirement. So that does include the all-electric building component of it that you asked about, and the Green Innovation section of the code just incorporates it as written in that high-performance building standard.
Excellent. Thank you. So it is a it is a baseline requirement. My second question is whether or not there's a consideration for available light for solar when you're considering building heights and proximity and setbacks and all those sorts of things.
Brad, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, I can I can tip in. It is, it was absolutely considered. It was one of the driving forces behind a lot of the transitions, like setting that angle that we talked about. We we actually modeled shadows. We looked at solar access. We looked at a lot of those different pieces as we set those. It also affected the absolute heights that were set as well. So it's a really important thing, particularly Um, it also affected the absolute heights that were set as well. So it's a really important thing, particularly in a a cloudy place like Seattle area um to maximize that solar access. So it was definitely um part of the the calculus.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Okay, so we are going to go to the last segment here. Which is the preliminary planned action ordinance, and I will pass this over to Allison um who will present this portion, and then we'll go into the last portion of the Q and A. So Allison, hopefully your audio is working. Okay, great.
Yeah, and again, interrupt me if I'm if I'm choppy. So this is a quick one. We want to touch on it briefly and then open it up to um take questions about the planned action ordinance and any other miscellaneous questions that we haven't caught yet. Um, so if we could go ahead and go to the next slide, the the planned action ordinance is really um informed by the draft and final environmental impact statements that were completed for the plan. The final uh supplemental environmental impact statement was issued back in December of twenty twenty one, so at the end of last year, and it's available on the webpage as well. And it informs the specific mitigation measures for future development. So if there's been an impact identified, uh, the the planned action ordinance will set thresholds for the maximum law of growth in the area. Also, what improvements might be necessary in the area uh to accommodate that growth? So it may include uh requirements for transportation improvements, for example. And then it's also going to cover what's required for certain projects to be covered as planned actions. So meaning they fall within the threshold studied within the environmental impact statement for the station area and wouldn't need to complete additional environmental uh study. That doesn't mean that they wouldn't need to uh possibly complete additional transportation analysis. For example, that's project specific. This is really done at a planning level for the full area and sets those thresholds. Um, and we're looking at adopting that in June. And so with that, I think we're going to open it back up for any questions. I I can't remember if there's a next slide and any miscellaneous questions. We are going to prioritize if folks haven't asked a question yet. Um, we're going to prioritize uh getting to those folks. And if if anyone has repeat questions, you could raise your hand. Um, and then I think this uh segment will end at seven twenty five uh before we cover next steps at the end. And I know we've got a lot of questions coming in written as well. We're trying to answer those as we go. And then we'll be working to provide some additional answers uh on the project webpage if we don't get to them tonight.
Thanks, Allison. Um, so I know Ken, you've asked a question already tonight and Sharon, I believe you did too. Has anyone who hasn't had a chance to ask a question? Um, this is a great opportunity if you want to go ahead and raise your hand. Just give a second here. Oh, great. Um, if I mispronounced your name, I apologize. Uh, Jocelyn, if you go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh, yeah, that was perfect pronunciation.
Great.
Um, my name's Jocelyn. I just have a comment rather than a question. Um, I realize that, I mean, Kirkland has grown quite a bit, and I understand that people are really apprehensive of the change. I mean, we've had a huge technology boon here that requires, um, you know, some change. Things are changing. One of the ways that I feel like the city is doing a great job by doing some upstream thinking rather than trying to figure out some of these issues down the line. We saw what happened at Silicon Valley when with the tech boom, home prices increasing, people can't afford the home. So I'm all for affordable housing for people who are who are not in tech. They can't afford to live out here if they don't have a tech salary. And those people includes uh staff at the schools, teachers. They have to commute far, you know, because they can't afford to live here. And if we are really trying to be inclusive and have more diversity in Kirkland, we have to be able to bring the people who are diverse to be able to afford the area, and that includes affordable housing. Thank you.
Thanks for that really great question, very important topic. I wonder if um Jeremy or Erin, if you want to speak more about the affordable housing components and the equity element um that we've been taking into account for this plan. They're really important topics.
I'll start um with the affordable housing requirement, Sandra, and again invite the team to chime in and then I'll turn it over to Erin. Um, it's a great. It's a great question and really important to Kirkland because there is a, we do have a housing crisis in Kirkland. And um we're working on many, many fronts to try to address the shortage of housing at various income levels. Relative to the stationary plan, right now, we have, the city has inclusionary zoning requirements, meaning that every um most multifamily developments that are built in Kirkland are required to set aside ten percent of their units as affordable housing. So um a baseline for the stationary plan is if with the um increases in density coming through increased building heights, that will up the total delivery of affordable units um just uh from the get go, because you'll have a higher percentage of or more units at that ten percent um that need to provide that affordable housing requirement. On top of that, we're trying to look at the incentive space that Brad talked about. So if a developer wants to build um up to the maximum building height, how much of that um can they achieve through incentives for providing something beyond the existing city requirement for affordable housing? So options we've been talking with our affordable housing partners about vary from like either deeper levels of affordability based on King County median incomes, um providing more than ten percent, so say fifteen, twenty percent of the unit set aside for affordable housing. And another um comment that's come up uh um through our public comment is the need for family size housing. So um how could we provide housing for um families, multiple bedrooms, instead of just studios and one bedrooms in the stationary? So those are the kind of fronts that we're working on relative to the incentive zoning. Erin, did you want to add to that?
Thanks, Jeremy. Um, just to add a couple of notes, I I just wanted to um reinforce that uh obviously how it, there is a housing crisis right now. We know that in Kirkland, uh, housing prices are even fifty percent higher than the average in in King County. Um, and so uh as Jeremy mentioned, we have been working uh on a number of different fronts. I I also just wanted to share that the city has been actively coordinating with uh other partners and agencies and organizations, uh including Arch as well as the King County Housing Authority. And I think it's fair to say that um we're just looking for every way, both through some of the incentives, the regulations, and through partnerships on ways that we can improve on providing more housing choices to people at all different ages and stages within their lives, as well as um of course, supporting the residents that are able to live within the stationary today.
Thanks, Erin. I wonder if there was also an opportunity to talk about the second component to Jocelyn's question about jobs and um the ability to be equitable. Erin, I don't know if you wanted to speak to those components as well.
Well, I know, um, Jocelyn, you mentioned um uh people being able to afford housing, including teachers and others. And so um that is as well, something that we're thinking about and have heard uh from the school district as well as other uh large employers that um, you know, having housing affordable for for people who are working in the stationary is a challenge. Um, so that is something uh a part of the thinking. Um, with respect to jobs and businesses, uh, I would say it's a similar approach to to housing in some ways where we're aiming to both support the existing businesses that do exist within the stationary today. There's many of them, including all different scales and sizes and types of businesses. Um, and then similarly, we're looking to um uh support growth and addition of more jobs um again across a range of scales and types. And so within the the code, the way that we're doing that um is um providing for um different scales of spaces. Um, and also um a different scales of of business sizes uh incorporated in different areas within the district. Jeremy, anything to add on the on the jobs and business side?
No, I think that's a that's a thorough answer of what we've done so far.
Great. Uh, so next we'll hear from Linda. So Linda, if you could unmute yourself um and go ahead and ask your question or share a comment. Uh, and Linda, you're still muted if. I know there's a bit of a lag. I'll give it a couple of seconds.
I just got it.
There we go. Awesome.
I was going to get that. Um, I was uh trying to tell you to skip me. Um, so I did want to follow up with uh just what was being talked about, the affordable housing. First off, you you're saying that affordable housing is being incorporated into this project. I'd like that defined. Sometimes what, you know, they say affordable, but then it's not really. I mean, affordable to whom? Um, and the second part is, you know, um, the um making more housing for uh middle income people, the working, the more working class, the non-techies, um, the service industries, the teachers. Uh, what about the ones that already live here that are getting priced out because of property tax? I mean, is there going to be any hope for that? Because it's just, you know, the house, I'm, I live in the Highlands and the houses around me are being bulldozed down and replaced with mega mansions. And every year I I get the new tax evaluation and it's a whole bunch higher. Uh, you know, I don't know how, and I watch my neighbors move away because of it and another mega mansion going up. And this is what you allow, and yet you say you want affordable housing. Um, this is craziness. So I want to know about property tax and I want a definition of affordable housing for what you're incorporating in this plan.
Thanks, Linda. We're we're hearing a lot um tonight about affordable housing. Allison, do you want to speak more about the working class or middle middle class housing and um affordable housing in general?
Yeah, so I'd love to start with the definition of affordable in Kirkland, and then I'd invite um Jeremy or Adam to chime in with some of the work the city's done citywide uh in that missing middle housing category. Um, so to start with this, the city's current definition of affordable housing for renter occupied units is fifty percent of the average King County household income. For owner occupied units, it is eighty to one hundred percent of King County a household income. Know that at uh that median household income in King County is is quite high, which is why we've spent a lot of time trying to think about how we can get increase the amount of affordable housing we have in the area, but also looking at how we might incentivize affordable housing provided at deeper levels of affordability than that. Um, I also, I think in one of the answers in the Q and A posted a link to um the November twenty twenty one, a frequently asked question document that provides a little bit more background and answers to several questions we got around the topic uh back uh towards the end of last year. And then Adam, do you want to talk about some of our missing middle housing?
Yeah, sure. I'll I can talk really briefly about missing middle housing. It's where the workforce housing issue, which is, yeah, you know, at a crisis level, I would say in our region, is something that we've worked really hard on at the city, and we have a couple of programs that address it. One is our missing middle housing program, which Ally talked about um or mentioned. It's basically allowing additional density in single family zones to allow for the construction of more compact housing, like accessory dwelling units and um cottages and duplexes and triplexes that are built by the market, but they tend to be more affordable um because they're smaller. And so that's a program that has been implemented um basically across the city in our single family zones that that's producing some results. Um, we've also partnered um at the city with Community Roots Housing, which is actually working on building um workforce housing throughout the city as well. So it is something that we've been paying a lot of attention to lately.
Thanks, Adam and Allison. Um, so uh, we can go next to Ken. Ken, if you want to unmute yourself and go ahead and ask a question, and I just remind everyone, we've got about nine minutes or so left for um this question period. So if you have any other questions, please feel free to raise uh your hand, the virtual hand.
Uh, well, thank you very much. I I appreciate that. And I I'd like to follow up on this discussion about housing and and jobs. So the focusing on the station area, which doesn't include the the cottage world, right? Because the station area is all about in very, very tall, dense uh buildings, urban, an urban setting. Uh, the emphasis is clearly on office buildings, and you can see that in the first slide or second slide where there was a discussion about the number of households and the number of offices, the number of jobs. Um, and so what I see in that strategy and the the plan as it's as it stands is that there's going to be a very large number of high tech offices. It appears to be mostly all dedicated to Google, to to Google, um, where the average employee is making two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a year. And um there's going to be some amount of uh workforce housing, but nobody will live and work in the same neighborhood because the people in the workforce housing aren't going to be working at Google. If they're working at Google, they're going to be buying a large house uh either by bidding up the prices in Kirkland or or picking a house in Woodenville or or even further out where they can get the kind of space that uh goes along with that kind of salary. You think of a couple making six hundred thousand dollars a year. That's a lot of house. So the people that are living in the stationary plan and the workforce housing, well, there might be some teachers. There might be some people that work at the local coffee shop. But the draft environmental impact statement and its final uh brother said that uh there will be fewer service jobs in the station area than there are uh under today's zoning. So there's no work life, there's no live work neighborhood going on here. Instead, we have two distinct, separate communities, people commuting in to go to the office from homes far away uh or very expensive homes nearby, and people that are commuting out in order to go to their job, say a warehouse in Kent. And this is not adding up to to the goal of having a live work neighborhood. And so I'd like to see the stationary plan reflect that goal of a uh highly efficient economic uh environmentally friendly live work neighborhood where there's jobs locally that people can can walk to. And there's uh uh more of a neighborhood kind of environment rather than this swapping in and out of commuters and and residents that is envisioned here. So I think the stationary plan is, as it stands, is totally missing the opportunity that was presented to it.
Thanks, Ken, for that comment. I wanted to invite um Jeremy to speak a little bit more about the vision for the stationary plan and how it's mixed use and also um invite Adam as well, if you want to speak to any portion of the balance or um access to transit.
Yeah, thanks, Ken. The stationary plan um does include um mixed use, and so it is enabling the construction of significant residential in addition to potential for significant commercial in the area. Um, one of the things we looked at as we um through the environmental impact process and early study in it was what the appropriate uses were closest to four oh five. And the determination early in the process was that that was best suited to office uses that wouldn't be as sensitive to freeway noise as we see in some of the comments here tonight from residents adjoining four oh five. So that's why the emphasis has shifted to um commercial adjoining four oh five um while being a bit more agnostic or open about what uses could occur elsewhere, but um anticipating the delivery of a significant amount of housing and probably demand for additional housing as the stationary grows. And that kind of reflects also on the city's um historic growth targets, um where we've seen um a pretty robust uh housing market in Kirkland, but not as much office development over time to keep pace with our with our office target. So we think the stationary plan is a way to address that in part also. Adam, do I add anything to that?
Yeah, sure. The only thing I talk about is that it's because it's a good a good point that Ken brings up. And I think typically, you know, on the city level. And I think typically, you know, on the city level in Kirkland, we think about jobs-housing balance, not on the on the local scale. We think about it on the subregional or regional scale. The concept here is that, yes, there might be some people who live and work in the same neighborhood, in this particular neighborhood, the station area. But I think a lot of people, you know, who are switching jobs, you know, 10 or 12 times throughout their careers or more, are likely not going to find themselves living in the same place where they're working. And so the concept is putting, giving people the opportunity to live close to this this really great transit infrastructure that's being built and really good bike and pet infrastructure that's being built as well. So if you are working, living in the station area, and you're working at a warehouse in Kent, for instance, you'll have a better, you'll have more abilities to travel to Kent by transit than you than you do today, because there will be more housing opportunities around this BRT station, which is, you know, equivalent essentially to a light rail station in terms of the frequency of use and how great the transit is.
Thank you both. So I think we have time to take one last question. It's 7:23. So Sharon, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself. This will be the last question for the evening, and then we'll go to the last portion, which is just the summary and recapping next steps.
Okay.
Go ahead.
There I am. Okay. My question was back to the traffic circles. I just wanted to know if there's going to be traffic circles all up and down 85th for the various intersections that cross it around the BRT? And also if there's going to be yield signs at at all of the roads that are coming into the traffic circle to allow equal asset access for everyone to get onto 85th? And and then also, if the traffic circles don't work and there's massive traffic jams, are you going to go back to traffic signals? Is that a consideration?
Thanks for that question, Sharon. Victoria, do you want to speak more about traffic circles? And then the the aspect of whether there'll be yield signs for safety? And then any thought about the mitigation portion?
Yeah, thanks, Sharon. And I just responded to your message in the chat. Sorry, we're getting to these questions as quick as we can here. So there will be a roundabout at the Kirkland Way 114th 85th intersection. And then as well as in the interchange itself, there's sort of a dog bone-shaped roundabout. Again, all details of that project is available on Sound Transit's website. No other roundabouts are planned for 85th other than those associated with interchange project at this time. And I will say roundabouts as a traffic mitigation strategy as an engineering treatment are more efficient at moving vehicles and vehicle capacity. And it is the state's preferred treatment for freeway on and off ramps. So I would say there aren't plans to revert back to a signal as it would be less efficient at handling vehicle capacity than a roundabout would be. And the roundabout would be designed to wash dot standards, which includes yield signs and markings and crosswalks, as I mentioned, with the activated beacons for safe crossing, similar to what's happening at 132nd.
Thanks, Victoria. All right. So that's the end of the Q and A portion. So I'll pass it back to Allison to close us out here in the last five minutes.
Great, thank you. And thank you so much, everyone, for, again, spending so much of your evening with us. Great questions and comments. As I mentioned, we've been listening and several council members and planning commissioners have been here listening as well. And so we appreciate your time and and energy spent here tonight. Just wanted to go over a few things again, which is that the draft documents that we've been talking about tonight are available on the station area webpage now. These are the same versions that were included in the for the May 12th Joint Council and Planning Commission session last week. But they're available on the top of the webpage now. There's a screenshot over on the right that shows where those are. We're also planning on doing a display in City Hall. So if you want to come engage with some of these materials live and in person, we're going to have a display, several posters showing some of the overviews and renderings that we've flashed on the screen tonight will be available at City Hall starting early next week. We'll plan on sending out an email update to the list served. So if you haven't signed up for that yet, you can do it on the webpage, and we'll send out an update when we've got that display up and ready. We also would love to welcome people into City Hall. We have kiosks available. If you want to read them on the documents on computers, and we can provide printed copies upon request. Staff can be available for questions. And then lastly, this is, again, been all to kind of help folks get engaged and informed before the June 9th hearing to Planning Commission. That will be the public hearing where you can make comments live to Planning Commission. But wanting to remind folks again that you can also submit written testimony to the Planning Commission prior to that public hearing over on the right. You can submit it directly to Planning Commission at their email address listed below or to me, and I'll forward it to them. We do request and recommend that you make it clear you're making a public comment for that hearing so that we make sure it gets to them in the proper way. And we also have will have be launching a survey, a community survey about possible names for the station area participating in that. And so a lot of what I just went over, but now you can start submitting written testimony now through the hearing date on June 9th. And we'll be getting that station area display up and running in City Hall early next week. That Planning Commission public hearing, again, scheduled for June 9th. And then consideration for adoption by council later in June. And that's for Phase 1. So the commercial mixed-use districts that we talked about tonight will be picking up additional study and additional engagement with the community, City Council and Planning Commission for in the summer. And again, thank you so much, everyone, for joining tonight and spending some time with us.